It's released.
Okay, at six thirty, I'd like to call the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Bell Town Council meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind people in the room and also people online. This meeting is being recorded and participation in the meeting is your consent to be recorded and to the rebroadcast of the meeting. The recorded meeting is available on the town's YouTube channel. Roll call, please.
Avenger.
Present.
Phil Giffens.
There.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Sally Richardi.
Here.
Rich West.
Present.
Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own, with no need to trust up to the throne.
So everyone had a chance to, pardon me, everyone had a chance to, on the council, review the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three minutes?
Yes.
Mr. West moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Michiana Area Council of Government Electric Vehicle Charging Grant.
The last meeting, you had some questions, so Leah is here to answer them all.
I thought I could also give a brief background on your existing station as well.
Excuse me. Would you identify yourself, please?
I'm Leah Phil. I'm with the Michiana Area Council of Governments Offices in South Bend.
Thank you.
So you have one driving station currently that's operated by the town that was installed a little over a year ago, and that station was funded through grant funding of ten thousand dollars. Nine thousand dollars of that came from the private Volkswagen settlement administered through the state, five hundred from MACOG and five hundred from NIPSCO. So that ended up covering the bulk of the costs. The total project was about fifteen thousand dollars, and so the town ended up contributing thirty-five percent of the cost, or just over five thousand dollars. In comparison, we are now applying for a federal grant that would cover eighty percent of the of a project's cost, so that's a higher percentage than what the other opportunity covered. Wanted to provide you a little bit of background on the existing station and the usage it's getting, but I've heard that it's pretty fairly fairly well-used, and there were some folks charging there when it went by this evening. So within the last year, it used just over seven megawatt hours. There were a hundred and two unique drivers. That's unique different people or different cars using the station in two thousand twenty-two, just over a hundred. Forty-five people, unique individuals so far this year, and the peak months, no surprise, starts in July, goes till about October. And you've seen a peak of about seventy-five sessions per month, but I expect that to continue as EV adoption increases. The operating cost currently is about a little over a thousand dollars a month, sorry, a year, in electricity costs when you look at that seven megawatt hour price. So keep that in mind when we talk about the price to charge for people to use the station. Want to go into that?
No.
Just correctly, or?
No.
Okay.
About green.
Okay. Because I'm happy to also answer questions about what should it cost and what does that mean for the cost of gasoline. So so the current grant, we anticipate that the cost of the stations will be a little higher because it's been several years. And in addition, the project requires to have four ports minimum capable of charging four vehicles simultaneously. I believe that that is overbuilt for the current times. So what I'm recommending is that only two of the parking spaces are signed or reserved for EVs, and then the other two would be flex spaces that are first come, first served, so that there's not conflict with taking more parking than you're seeing from vehicles. So that that's the minimum project size that would be required to be included in our federal grants. Currently, we are focusing on rural areas and small towns because that's where we see, you know, we see urban areas getting this investment, maybe Whole Foods or places are putting these in. We're not seeing that in the private market. We're seeing a lack of investment, which is why I'm looking to focus a lot on small towns. So our guests were including Middlebury, Winona Lake, North Liberty, Plymouth, their handful of others as well. So I talked about whether there's interest in expanding the existing station to include two more possibly by the visitor's center or wherever it would get the most use. But we were, we also looked at the school. We felt that was way overbuilt to have four over by the school by the ball field. And then Culver Academy, we just couldn't find any parking lot to work with them as a partner. That would be, both have sufficient electric service. There. So with that background, I have plenty more information I can share if I have a specific question there.
When you were searching out sites, did you check the library?
We did. I drove by there. I felt like the parking lot was a little small. I really don't like taking up a large percentage of parking where it's more limited. I don't feel comfortable with that, even with new spaces. But we could have more conversations if the library as a partner, as the site host, would want to benefit that.
Does this take three phases?
It does not. So this is, I call it destination level charging. It's slow, about twenty-five miles every hour. So you sit there for half a day, you have a hundred miles added. This is not something where someone is passing through on their way to Indianapolis, stopping for thirty minutes. This is someone to come here and stay for a long time.
So it would charge slower than the ones that we currently have?
So that's about the speed that they charge.
Same speed.
It's not like plugging into a regular outlet. That takes days.
Yeah.
This destination level takes hours, and then you measure fast driving along highways in minutes.
Is there a reason we're not looking at a faster charge?
The cost would increase by about a factor of ten. So a ten thousand dollar plug becomes a hundred thousand dollar. So that answers most people's curiosity on the matter. We could include it if there's the local match twenty percent and interest in providing that. Certainly, no one is going to put it here if the town doesn't play a role in that for some time. But I feel, you know, people living in the condos, if they plug in overnight at a station, they should have sufficient charge by morning to satisfy that kind of use.
And there are no restrictions on this one as far as are, we getting reverse for the cost of this and charging a fee for using it?
So the restrictions are that it needs to be reasonable to the operating cost that it it costs you for the first five years. After five years, you can charge whatever you want. So the goal is that it's not a net loss to the town on the operating side. Currently, your unit is free, so it's all expense. But the idea is you would set the fee so that it cancels out all your costs for the electricity, credit card fee. But as far as charging to make a significant profit, what I think would happen is people just would not use it, except for the very rare guest if you charged three, four times electricity. But the federal grant also says it must be reasonable.
We told a consultant recently that the average national cost per kilowatt hour is forty-five cents, I believe. Is that considered reasonable?
Cost for charging a vehicle?
The the fee to charge a vehicle.
Um, that's probably coming from the Electrify America prices, which are somewhere around forty-three to forty-five cents per kilowatt hour. That's generally what is charged for the fastest charging. Those units are capable of fully charging a vehicle in twenty to thirty minutes. Here, we're talking capability of eight to twelve hours. So there, you're really paying for the convenience and the speed of you're stopping at a gas station for a few minutes and you're continuing on your way. That's where those hundred thousand dollar infrastructure investments are being paid back through those higher charging costs.
Are there just two different speeds into which they charge?
Essentially, there's three. There's plugging into a regular outlet.
Yeah, yeah.
There's the destination level, which is two hundred and forty volts, and then there's the three-phase power that was mentioned, which is where you're paying forty-five, fifty, even fifty cents a kilowatt hour, but typically somewhere in the forties unless you're a member of some company.
Both of you. Work on these.
Yes. So level two charging, which is the destination level, all cars take the same plug except for Tesla. All Tesla drivers have an adapter to use it. That gets a little different when we talk about level three, there are a couple different things. But at level two, you don't have to worry about, as long as you don't put in a Tesla-specific charger, anyone will be able to use it.
And peak time during July, how many hours per day? I assume those would be Saturday and Sunday, maybe?
I can get you a detailed breakdown in whatever way you would like it, get your report if you'd like to see what those peak times are.
And you said the cost is ten thousand three hundred bucks.
So I estimate the local match will be about ten thousand dollars for the four state, for the four parking spaces, which is two units. I estimate the total local match would be about ten thousand dollars. Now, MACOG, through our general fund, we have set aside some money just to help small to pay their local match. So we would be willing to dedicate up to three thousand dollars towards that ten thousand out of our general funds. We're not doing that for other private parties or nonprofits or cities, but we have set aside some money to help offset that somewhat.
When you say reasonable cost for charging, can you prorate that installation, ten thousand into that?
Um, I would argue that you can, because if you were a business and you wanted to have a rate of return that was reasonable.
Well, it's not so much an ROI. I'm just trying to keep
You would.
Two similar.
Yeah. You would include your upfront costs, which could include the remaining seven thousand. That would make sense to you, Dana? I think that would be reasonable.
And that's the installed cost?
The total installed cost?
I mean, because last time that was part of our matches, I believe. Last time it was. This one's different. So so this is rolled into that?
Um, this is the installed cost. So it's hardware, five
Sure, key. Okay.
Five-year software subscription, five-year personal label warranty. At the end of five years, whatever you want to do at the station, you're proud of it. Our plan currently is for MACOG to technically retain ownership of it. We would have access to the reporting, but functionally, you would start with electricity, you would collect the revenue into your bank account. We're just sort of overseeing and managing the projects throughout the five-year reporting period.
Perfect.
Look, the one thing we need to include you in the grant, which is due at the end of May, is a letter of support from the town. So if there's interest, I did draft a letter. I don't know if I circulated, but I have copies I can leave after folks want to look at that. But it breaks down just the rules and expectations roughly of the grant, the fact that MACOG would try to help with the twenty percent match, and kind of explains your current situation with one charger and the need for charging in smaller communities.
Will you also promote this? We'll have a queue on maps someplace like this. There's a charging station.
That'll be on, it'll be on, it'll be on, whatever this link, charge point, if you go, it'll be on theirs. So people would use their smartphones and
Action tonight or it'll be the next meeting when I have time to call it over?
Um.
Next meeting in two weeks.
Oh, two weeks. Okay, I was, some towns only meet monthly. Two weeks are perfectly fine. End of the month is when I need the letters. So if you get it to me by May twenty-fifth, I'd rather you have the time to think about it. No, I don't want to push you to make a decision at all. So I will just leave with you the letters of, the letter of support draft, which I'm happy to change any language so that it fits your community better.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh eight, reestablishing the Q cap development fund. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move.
It's been moved by Mr. Giffens, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Uh huh.
Aye. Public hearing's open at six forty-two.
This.
Pardon?
Would you like me to introduce this?
Would you please, Karen?
Yes. So the Q cap development fund is a fund that we already have in existence. There's already a tax rate attached to it, and that tax rate is point zero four two seven. So basically, four point two seven, that's per one hundred dollars of assessed value on your home. That, that, the state, basically, when they initiated this, you would set the rate at five cents, and then over time, that rate would fall. It was like a rolling type of thing. Recently, the state re-did some rules and said, if you establish your Q cap fund once at five cents, you're done. It will stay at five cents per, I'm going, you don't have to go up to these people. The last time we established this, or reestablished it, was back in like thirteen or fourteen, so it's been a while. That fund is used, has been used in the past for financial farm infrastructure, matching funds for Catalent Park and the Beach Lodge, purchase of the area, fire truck, other information. There was a hidden out of the door, so if you didn't find it, there are a couple of others. I have some up here, if you want, for anybody who didn't receive it. So basically, right now, what you're looking at, if your home is assessed at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the current rate that you're paying on that tax is a hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents, with the increase that would increase to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. So that's a difference of eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. And and then I went, you know, that range is from two hundred and fifty, so it went up to a million dollars. I know it's probably got a whole lot of us in this room, but for chicks and giggles, the current, the current tax rate would be, is four hundred and twenty-seven dollars based, if you took that assessment for next year, at five cents, it would be five hundred dollars. So it'd be a difference of something. And just to let you know, too, it's on that paper, but this year, we're receiving ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And if it's based on this year's assessment, I don't know what these people are going to do if those assessments will change next year. That's out of my hands. But based on assessed value this year, in the five cent, we would receive a hundred and twelve thousand, seven, three, sixty-eight. So that would be a difference of sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and cents.
Any questions on part of the public? Yes, please identify yourself.
And what the reason in establishing this, as a, of the best multiple was, what the money is needed for? And is this something that can't, is this a budget issue? In other words, we've spent money that we now need to raise this money to cover something else? It was part of a plan, it's something. Why is this being done now? Okay, so, and then the one other thing I just, and are you telling me that this rate that you've attached now is the max rate? It will never be raised? It's at that five, that five cent is absolutely max?
Okay, so I'm gonna go backwards because, yeah, there was a lot to take in and get a lot to remember, so you should have to remind me of your questions. So is this the maximum, and it's not going to change? I don't have control over that, but it's something that's in the legislature.
Okay.
So right now, that five cent is the maximum that's based up for that, that fund. That's as high as it can go right now. So you're gonna have to work backwards, I think. What was your second class? Or either one?
Why, why are you establishing this funding? What's the money for?
So basically, the the money is used, can be used for capital items. As I said in on that paper, we'd use it for a number of items. The first, the aerial truck, the air bottles for the fire department, EMS radios. We have a number of projects coming up in the utilities department that we could use this money for, and we're really trying not to take out a bond to pay for those projects. And so if we can build up some of these funds in this area, we can use it for some of the utility problems as well. So and that's anything that I'm trying to get on the paper, or as gathering everybody and plans, so we can plan out for the next five to ten years and see where we're at.
Okay, so this is capital expenditures, fully.
It's capital. The only thing that may be included in there is the ten thousand dollars that we pay in March for any, so to balance. I don't have a feeling that that's trying to decide, I don't do one minute. Thank you.
It's modified. And so we just kept doing, kept doing. And just finally, I know you said we don't want to fall apart, and we're going to be developing bonds for the Dunes Development, but by the way, I don't want to start that, especially, it is, is if that just that that would be, you don't want to fall apart because that would be efficient and good debt, it's going to be associated with that project.
So you have to remember that that Dunes project, that any part associated with that would be added for the, with the redevelopment commission. So that's separate from your Dunes bonds.
Any other questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
I'm open, right. Is there a reason that we're raising it to five percent?
Because that's the maximum money that you can get, the maximum rate that you can go. The the time to do it is this period of the year before the tax. So there's a lot of processes that we have to go through as far as getting ready for this twenty twenty-four budget. So you have to establish rates, anything that's ever changed. That, it's just the maximum that we can go, and I'd like to just reestablish it now because if I don't, it's, it needs to be reestablished at some point because it's just continued, it's going to continue to fall. Over here to
Okay, so, or what?
Four point two, so, zero point zero four two seven is what the rate is currently. It started at five cents in two thousand fourteen, I believe. I think that's when we reestablished it, but I could be wrong. I've sunk a little bit since then. So it moves down each year. And honestly, I, I did not I'm not going to all the mechanics mechanisms that are in place by the state, so, in order to understand why it goes down. I just know it goes down periodically. So we reestablished it now, up to five cents, we're done. We never have to do this again for this fund.
Anyone online?
Hi, this is Doug Farmer, two twenty-five Lakeview. Can you hear me, Bill?
Yes, I can hear you, Doug. Go ahead.
Yeah, hey, thank you. Quick question. I read through the ordinance, I don't, or the, the statute. I'm not sure who sent it out, but so Karen, and maybe I just misunderstood what, what the intent of this fund was for. But at the bottom of it, it says basically that it could be made available based on declaration of public safety or something, something to that extent. So it sounds like this is put, being put aside for potentially capital-type projects, infrastructure-type projects. So if that's the case, if that's the case, does that align itself with the statute?
It does. So there's a number of different Q cap funds that are available, and this is one item that we could use it for, is capital development, capital projects, the utilities, if the utility projects that we have for the water, if you're a plant, are, would be considered travel projects.
Okay, so according to that statute, then there, there is no requirement for, for the funds to be made available based on a public safety matter, right? It's, it's either or?
I think there's actually a public safety Q fund, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Well, yeah, I was just reading the statute that, and again, it was sent out a couple of days ago, indicating that this was going to be part of the agenda. And so I just read that statute, and at the very end of it, there are like, there are like two, two variables of, of the funds being made available for use. And one of them said that it was, it was predicated on the town declaring some sort of safety issue. But again, may, maybe there's more to the statute than just what was simply sent out. So I wanted to understand a little bit better how those funds can be made available for, for expenditure.
Yeah. I mean, basically, we have to budget that during the budget time that we're entering into. We will budget monies out of that for specific projects. You know, if you're public safety, we purchased, we purchased a lot of things. So my brain is not, you know, I tried to put a list together of what it had been, what we'd purchased out of it. I think we were, we had talked about maybe purchasing one of the squad cars out of it. I don't know that that's happened. I know we, we use money out of there towards the aerial front for the fire department. So there is a variety of items that we use that money for in the past. But we've also used it for sidewalks. So, which is where the sidewalk, the sidewalk program that we have, the funds for that project come out of that, that fund as well. Does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it gets close. Thank you.
All right.
Hearing no others, I'd have a motion to close the public hearing, please. It's been moved by Mr. West.
A second.
Second by Ms. Richardi. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose with the same sign.
Aye.
New code. Four yeas and one nay.
Okay, then we're done.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty.
That was
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I, for the public here.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I'm sorry.
All right, okay. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh eight, reestablishing the Q cap development fund. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion if we reestablish the CCD fund, ordinance two thousand twenty-three, zero, zero, eight.
I'll second that one.
It's been moved by Ms. Richardi and seconded by Mr. West. Discussion, please.
Well, I'm against it only because everybody, and I say only, everybody's gotten their tax bill this year, and if your tax bill looks like what mine did, my assessed value went, valuation went up thirty-six point eight percent. My taxes went up forty-four point four percent. This is also an election year. I don't see raising the taxes in an election year. People are hurting. I mean, you know, yes, we're forced to live in a resort town, but, you know, when your property tax goes up forty-four percent and you're on a fixed income like me and my wife are, I'm sorry, you know, these things can just wait another year. That's my point.
Just a, just a point on the tax bill. Well, the, well, the assessed value went up all across the board because of the market value of sales of the homes in Culver. Our tax rate actually went down, it went down from, I think, one point seven or the one point six seven, I believe.
In that regard.
Yeah. And the, the increased taxes are, I mean, are, it's unfortunate that we all have to pay those, but it is a, you know, it's a cost of the, the market value of our homes, which is, which is positive, I think.
And it's just not in Culver. I mean, all the cities and towns in Marshall County, those taxes went up, whereas the farmland did not. Now, so the farmland will probably go up next year. And this, it's a back and forth theater tighter every few years.
It's a little tangential, but one of the things we, you know, we may want to offer is some type of property tax one-on-one class and let people learn about how the assessed valuations work, and then also what the opportunities are for exemptions from that. There are a number of exemptions, and everybody should make sure that they're taking advantage of the exemptions that they're entitled to. I don't want our exemptions, the most prevalent option, who live here full-time, that would lower your assessed value by over a hundred thousand dollars if you have that. Now, in order to have that, you have to be a full-time resident. And it has to be your permanent residence, not just in this state, but in any state our neighbors may think. But I think that, you know, there are also, there is a discount for senior citizens, it's income-based, there's a discount for several other There's a discount, um, for several other things that people shouldn't explore with the assessor's office. I, uh, I'm not going to vote for tax increase in the old equation. Period that we have right now. I don't think it's fair to people and, uh, I don't think that you absolutely need that as much as they do.
Real call, please.
Mr. Clevinger.
Aye.
Mr. Githens.
Nay.
Mr. Ham.
Nay.
Ms. Rettard.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Three ayes, two nay. Karen, um, can we have a, a, a second, third read and we're done? All right. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the council appointment to the call for redevelopment commission. Really? You know, introduce yourself and tell us about yourself.
Sure. Yeah. Hi, my name's Lily Arzola. Um, I am a lifelong resident of Vienna. And I, uh, want to join the redevelopment commission because I feel like we need some young blood in the mix. And I also think that, um, some new ideas, some fresh ideas, some. I feel like I can contribute to that. Um, yeah, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Yeah, I've, I've been in this town my whole life and I've always wanted to see it grow and prosper. I worked in the restaurant industry right here in town for 15 plus years and, um, trying to get out of that and get more involved into the town and contribute, basically.
Active with schools?
Yes, yes, I'm active with school. Uh, this year I'm helping boost softball, little league. And I'm always into, you know, contributing to the town and, you know, looking for growth.
Any questions, Lily?
Volunteering your service.
Yeah, absolutely.
Always a positive thing.
Yeah.
Now that is.
Well, Lily, it's my pleasure. He's the president of the town council appoints you. It's council appointment.
Yeah.
Beg your pardon. Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Okay. Sally, Ms. Rashardi moves for the appointment as her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens and Mr. Ham. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you for stepping forward. Next on the agenda is the Sand Hill Paddocks Tax Abate.
I provided to you, um, earlier this week and then today, um, tax abatement forms. Um, it's basically a check in for both, uh, the paddocks, um, Sand Hill and then ACPI or Cabinet Works also has a tax abatement several years ago. So if you are okay reviewing those and, um, approving, basically what you're doing is, um, approving that either the property owner is in substantial compliance. Or the property is not in substantial compliance. Um, and then this information tests onto this. I would just need a motion. Um, I would probably split them out. So there's one for Sand Hill Farm, one for the paddocks and one for the cabinet works. Abaintance because cabinet works.
Make a motion. We approve the one for ACPI.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Githens and seconded by Mr. West to approve the one for. So that might. ACPI. ACPI. Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Did they only have one or did they have two also?
ACPI. There's one that's falling out. Yeah, there's one for personal property.
Are you comfortable with just one motion? Now, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, for the ACPI.
No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Granted.
And then one for the paddocks and one for Sand Hill Farm.
Motion that we approve the, um, the application or the filing of the forms from Sand Hill for the tax abatement.
Mr. West made the motion to approve the Sand Hill. Mr. Sorry, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Thank you.
And then the paddocks.
Is there a motion to approve the paddocks?
Motion to approve the paddocks.
Mr. Shardy moves to approve the paddocks. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed.
Thank you. I'll get those turned in.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is a special event request. Kiwanis Pen Day, June 17th, 2023.
Sign up for that. Signed by all the carpet heads. Pen Day for the Kiwanis. Be using, utilizing orders at Academy Road Lector, main.
What are the times? Nine to one or something like that.
Seven, 30 to 12 thirds.
Thank you.
This is all the department heads have signed off on that. I make a motion to approve the Kiwanis application, um, for the June 17th. Was taken.
Mr. West moves to approve the special event permit for the Kiwanis Pen Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Requests. Approved. Went that back line. All right. Next on the agenda is the town manager search. I had a conversation last night with Mr. Ripley. He's informed me that we've had, uh, two applicants so far, one of which is a current town employee. Another was a gentleman from North Carolina. And he, uh, mentioned that, uh, he's going to do follow-up with both of his individuals. But other than the two that we have right now that he's received, we haven't had any others. And according to him, the process is still kind of hard to find applicants. He did have one that he wasn't even going to pass on to us. So from that point, um, I, I would suggest that. From that point, I would suggest that we, uh, postpone any further discussion on this until the 23rd, until we have a chance to, um, care more from Mr. Ripley. But council have any questions?
I agree.
Okay.
So you're saying between now and the 23rd, he's going to interview these people and come back with recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
And of course, during that period of time, he may still get.
Yeah, he could. Yes, absolutely.
That's what I'm.
Yeah. Yeah. But at least we have two.
So the door is still open.
Yep. Okay. Next on the agenda is department head report. Jeff, you want to report for EMS?
I have nothing to report to you.
Okay, thank you. Fire just left the room. Wayne? Okay, the park, Amber?
Yeah, just a few things. Sorry. Um, so for the playground project, um, and social gathering space project, uh, landscaping is the last portion of the project, of the construction. Um, I got the update that they should be out this week or next to do the landscaping. Um, I'm currently in discussions with Okra to get a ribbon cutting schedule. Uh, it looks like it'll likely be early June, uh, but I'll keep you posted. It really depends on the Okra reps', um, schedules. Um, I submitted a request with the lieutenant governor, but, um, again, they told me not to hold my breath. But I'll keep you posted as we get that schedule. Um, and I do just want to make an announcement that although it does look completed, it is not. Um, the playground surface, the key access is really sensitive. Um, we do have a fence around it, but I know it is enticing, but please stay off the surface and off the new grass, um, which is all covered in hay currently. We're struggling to keep people off of it. Again, we know it's very, um, tempting, but please encourage others to stay off. Um, the beach lodge middle office painting project, that's all completed. It looks really nice. Um, the lighthouse project, um, I do know the lighthouse is looking like it needs some fixes. I'm in the process. We're working on getting some quotes together to get that done. Please be patient with us as we're finding some more water damage than we would have liked. So, um, we'll keep you, I'll keep you posted on that. But again, patience is appreciated at this time. Um, the elevator project, I've received one quote for the sub pump pit and, um, I had a site visit from another company and just waiting to hear back there. So water is our issue at the moment. Um, and then other than that, our parking lot is all completed. If you haven't had a look, it matches everything very nicely. We're in the process of moving signs to appropriate parking spots. But we're really happy with how it turned out.
Anything else, Amber?
That's all. Thank you.
Amber, where, where's the farmer's market? What's the status on what they're doing and where, where and why?
Until the grass seed is grown, uh, we don't really want them, them in that area. It's going to take a few weeks. So until then, they're relocated to the basketball court.
Okay.
Until further notice, but Tracy and Chad do a really good job of updating. As soon as that happens, I'm sure they'll be posting it on TGO and social media.
Yeah, that, I think that's important. What you're saying about the grass and everything.
We're trying to keep people off for at least three to four weeks off of it. That would take some time.
Thank you.
Anything else, Amber?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Utilities, Bob.
This evening. Your trash company or contract with Republic Services is due to expire. And I reached out to him for a one-year extension. Do you set back the $1.50 increase? Per home?
For what period?
One year.
Wow.
And that's for both the trash and recycle.
As it is now, it'll just be an increase of $1.50 per home per month.
No other changes.
Other. Not a given time.
Per month or year?
Decide which one you.
Per month or per year?
It's per month.
Sixty.
Per month.
Per house. Sixty fifty per year. Eleven thousand. Need motion.
So we're going to need a motion to.
Yeah, that, that's right. They have a motion to approve the dollar, $1.50.
Before you make that motion, there was talk of bidding it.
The timing, I don't see.
And you ran out of time.
Right.
So I would encourage you to make some findings that because you ran out of time in the bidding process, not allowed and that you do need trash pickup, that sort of the exigent circumstances exist that you need to go along with this extension.
That's why I only did a one-year extension.
Yeah. And then also, uh, that the president be authorized to sign the extension agreement.
And I want to make a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the dollar and a half month increase on the local trash service and authorize, uh, the president of the council to sign it for a one-year extension.
Because?
Because we didn't have enough time to, uh, bid it out and it lies back in time, uh, due to the expiration date of the current contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Mr. Githens and seconded by Mr. West. All, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the, uh, one-year extension signify by saying aye.
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 Those same sign. Thank you. Karen Clark's report.
Um, I have one claim over $2,500 that needs approval and that's for Tim Uhas for pure removal or pure installation. Here, $9,750.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Been moved by Mr. Githen, seconded by Mr. Shardy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
Meetings ago, Annette Hanning from Walmart County became longer titled, um, you know, not giving her credit where credit is due. But she came and asked council if they would consider adding, um, the provision of e-cigarette, of the use of e-cigarettes in the park. No action was taken that night. And so I was, I'm asking you if you would like, I've, I've gone ahead and prepared an ordinance prohibiting the e-cigarettes. But I want to see if you guys are also supportive of that because I'm not going to go ahead and waste time if you're not.
I don't know if we need a formal motion to do that, but I would, if we do, I would move that we work toward amending the ordinance for no smoking in the park to include e-cigarettes.
And I would second based on the fact that we're just amending the current ordinance as opposed to having to come up with a separate.
Been moved by Mr. West and seconded by Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
To Jim, and I think I've done a copy for that.
Yeah, I think we can add easily add just that clause to that one section. Have it done.
Um, the electric vehicle charging station fees, just as a reminder, about a month or two ago, you all voted that you wanted to set that fee at $3 per hour. I've gone ahead and prepared that ordinance and sent it to Jim for review. Um, there is a public hearing scheduled for, uh, May 25th meeting. And so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Wait, May 23rd and not 25th?
May 23rd.
Not 25th?
Pretty sure.
I keep looking at the wrong month on my calendar. So yes, May 23rd.
Right.
Sorry. No.
Um, how I clean up, just to let everybody know, I, I think there's still some question. Um, we are doing how I clean up this weekend. However, instead of bringing your stuff to Bob at the water tower parking lot, Bob is going to come get your stuff. So put your stuff out at the curb this weekend. Everything, you know, it will take just about anything. The only things that you will not take are tires, hazardous waste and paint. And if you need a place for paint, let me know. I can give you that information. It's this recycling station. I think they will take your paint. So.
Third time, it should be on the curb.
It needs to be out there. Yeah. I'm touching. We're on the treadmill. Is it okay if, obviously it's okay if we leave the truck? All right. So that's done. Longer. That, um, broadband ribbon cutting, surf is quickly moving through and they contacted me last week about ribbon cutting. I've got it on hold tomorrow, so I will provide that information to you all as far as what, what we discussed. And didn't like to coincide that ribbon cutting with the first person into getting that. So I'm sure it's close. Um, and I think there were some questions too on how to sign up with surf and you, you should have received mailings. I know I've received a couple of them. So you would contact surf directly. Um, sorry, um, when, one of the topics when employee retention was discussed was in Hoover Start Program, which was an additional, uh, retirement savings opportunity for our employees, but it's at no cost at this speed of. but it's at no cost at this speed of, the town could decide if they wanted to match, but they don't have to, so it's really no cost to the town. But that's a program through the state auditor's office. I had a call to it this afternoon about that. I've already forwarded you information on that program. And if you are open, I can go, I will go ahead and prepare the resolution for the next meeting. So I don't know that I need a motion just to know that you're supportive of it and I'll go ahead.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, and then the final thing I have. I know there were some concerns when we stayed with the current banking that the interest rate available on money would exceed the interest rate on the savings account. There is a program through the state called Trust Indiana and you can invest, you can deposit funds there. I checked the other day and that rate has, is close to or has exceeded what our savings account or our LTCU is making right now. If that is something that you would like me to do, or if you are, let's put it this way. If you all are supportive of me moving some of the funds to that program, I will go ahead and get that paperwork prepared as well.
Can you tell me what the rate is?
Off the top of my head, no, but you can go to Trust Indiana and Trust Indiana's website and you can look it up.
I thought you, I thought you first thing you have.
Yes.
I'm lifetime withdrawal.
No, actually, it's kind of like a, saying it was like a wire transfer. So if there's something that you want to do that's a little bit more aggressive, we will need to form an investments board.
Right.
So I don't know if that's something that you all are interested in participating on, but I'm gonna leave that ball in your court. So if you're okay with that, I would gather more information. I will get stuff prepared for Trust Indiana.
I'm in favor of Trust Indiana.
I will get that prepared for the next meeting. And one other thing in reference to Mr. West, the comment about the property times 101. There are some sheets out there of information that I prepared a couple of years ago, so the rates aren't necessarily, I think they're like 2017 to 2019, but it gives you an idea about how property assessment works, how that all kind of funnels down to property taxes, the rates and how those are set. Updating those to the current numbers, but it was just one of those things this afternoon kind of hit me like that might be helpful. So I will get that together and I'll send that out to town. I'll make it the next, I'm gonna say. But, and with any of this stuff, if you ever, ever have any questions, please reach out to me directly. I'm happy to, if I don't know the answer, I will look for the answer for you. I'm happy to discuss, and I think people have reached out to me and have been responsive, so I hope that you'll just, you know, take the time to ask me some questions because I don't always know what's going to happen. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Fearn's report.
There's a comment.
I, I went up to obtain a property taxes and I went to the police office and she says your pensions are going to be combined instead in mortgage suspension to be one deduction rather than two. She said, she said that she thought at this point in time that would be better rate for everybody, but that's what the plan is from the state is to combine it to mortgage. Just a whoever cares.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just on the taxes, you, Bill had mentioned the tax bill that we all received in late March. First payment is due tomorrow, but on the back of that, there's a lot of useful information there. The second page gives where the tax dollars go, so show how much of your tax dollars go to union township, to the town, to the library, to all of the local taxing entities. Also, the back, that's cool. On the back of that form, in section five, I think it is, it talks about the the exemptions that you can get and are entitled to. And then just the last thing is, within the last week or two, if you have property that is taxed in Martin County, you will see the blue form notifying you of next year's assessment. Actually, this year's assessment payable in 2023. And there's a deadline for appealing that, which is June 15th.
Fearn's report.
Thank you. I got just a few things. The petition by the neighbors against the loft project is set for a case management hearing on May 25th. So lawyers on both sides and we will be participating in, in making arrangements and setting out the process for going forward on both petition court against the DZA and also against the plant commission. The Culver Neighbors for Responsible Development case against town and the Dunes Development. The hearing, I think I told you, I thought it was gonna be set for June 2nd and once I was corrected, it is set for June 2nd morning. It's gonna be conducted in Elkhart. But I, I checked and I think you'd be able to access it online if you so choose and I'll be sure to send the link to all of you, so you have it if you want to take a look at it. You know, it's, it's not a time for taking evidence. It'll be a time just for arguing the motions to dismiss and, and seeing what the judge thinks he's gonna do with that. You probably missed hearing from us because there haven't been any new motions for the last couple of weeks, but.
Did you feel from Bobby?
Oh, did you?
I'm sorry, your name.
Well, anyway, it might have been one that I forgot to send to you, the Jeanette item, but anyway. So that's, that's that situation. As for the project and the, and the grant and the tip thing, we've been sort of treading water with that till we find out where we are on the June 2nd business. We didn't want to get too far in front of ourselves and then have something surprising, so once the judge rules on the second, we'll, we'll know more for sure, one way or the other, and we'll know a little better how to proceed on that particular item. And then just kind of a FYI that you might not know, I'm working with your put treasurer to get an FSSA form. The general assembly tweaked the opioid statute and, and it did some other things, but you're now required to fill out this form that FSSA supposedly is coming up with to say where you use the restricted funds. It says you guys pledge something to Project Hope. We'll need to complete that form, explain that's what's going on. I think I shared with you too the time for the pharmacies to decide whether they were gonna go forward with their global settlement got pushed back till sometime this month. But it looks like with the participation, that's probably gonna go forward. Town's not gonna get as much money as with the distributors and the manufacturing of the opioids. Probably about two-thirds maybe of about the same money spread out over five years or seven years, depending on which pharmacy it is. And it'll be the same thing, though. You'll have 70% of it coming in that'll be used for restricted purposes and 30% that you can use for whatever you want to use, so I'll keep you kind of up to date with that and Karen and I'll keep working on those items. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I've got a question. The statute that questioning the distribution of those opioid funds for small towns with under, was it $5,000?
Yeah, now goes to the county.
I think our unrestricted fund, at least what we have in the bank is under.
Right, but this new funds coming in and if you're, if you're going to get more than, is it 3,000 or 5,000? What are you reading? It's a five. Okay. What, what was your, how much did you get on the first?
At the year, in the balance, I think it was about $27 or $48.
But you, but you used 70% of it. But that was two years. But it, it, basically, the attorney general didn't want to send small checks to small towns, so it's gonna send your check to the county and I'm not sure there's good direction on how it works, that the county sends you your money and you get it from the county. I've been asked to kind of check that out, so that, that will follow it. That's a game.
Potentially, we may not have any unrestricted funds, I guess.
You will, well, if, if, if it goes to the county and the county's supposed to pay you, you'll still end up with unrestricted funds.
The unrestricted funds that we received was $4,668 and the restricted funds that we received was $1,008.
But I see, I think that was a two-year payment on the distributor. Well, they paid it all at once, but it was for
A two-year period.
And that, and as I said, what you're gonna get from the pharmacies is gonna be about two-thirds of, what'd you say, 10 and 4? 13? So, yeah. You may very well be, you get two-thirds of that amount. Should get a chance. We'll see.
Thank you. Utility shot off or ordinance violation, anyone in the room?
You go. My name's Justin Croya, like, Liam lifelong resident of Culver. April 12th, I was given a, a golf cart violation. And kind of the situation that unfolded was, is what brought me here today, but the more that I kind of dug into it, I noticed a few things. The first thing is that this part of the ordinance was amended, was never updated on the town's website. It wasn't my golf cart. It wasn't registered to me, so I wouldn't have received the updated form. So the only way that I would have known what our golf cart rules and regulations are would have been to get on the website. And, and which we did before leaving, and that, this particular one was not listed on there. And then the second one, and this may be a discussion for the next, the next item on the agenda, but personally, from a, from a parent's standpoint, I feel like this is a more of an unsafe amendment to the violation than, than before. This is, this is my daughter Ellie. She is exactly 36 inches tall. But just in case we're unaware of what 36 inches looks like for a, for a golf cart. Yeah. This is the minimum height to ride on a golf cart in the town of Culver.
Oh, Ellie.
And although she meets, you say hi? Although she meets those, those standards are the rules that we've set, right? She lacks the capacity to understand, hey, I need to hold on when the golf cart stops and I need to do those things, so as proactive parents, we had her sitting on my wife Hannah's lap. Our son was at, at back home with grandma, went to the root beer stand, came back, got a violation for having her on, on her mom's lap.
And we left, we put her in the backseat and she started climbing.
Right, so from a, from a safety standpoint, I know that, and I've actually spent the last about 48 hours searching multiple towns in the state of Indiana to see if there's anything similar as far as minimum height requirement. And what I found is there's several towns that have done minimum weight requirement or ages older than two, some have three, some have six. Obviously, every town's different, but nobody was, was at the 36-inch mark. So from a, from a, you know, a citizen's standpoint, not, not understanding that that was, that was our rule at the time. I know this says, Mr. Clevenger, that I have the right to a trial for my offense, so my, my hope is today that that just gets, that gets dismissed, but whatever, as the, as the town attorney, I know you have
Yeah.
the recommendation.
Wayne, are you prepared to address the challenge of the ticket? Here? Yes.
Officer, the owner wrote today's date on, like, two come today.
Yeah, and that was another, it said to appear today.
I, I, I think you have the right to have this body be heard, but we also have to give due process so that, you know, let the officer know if he wants to come and give his side of what's going on, your side of what's going on. I suppose they have a right to do whatever, but if it's denied, then what happens is it gets turned over and we file it in court. And you have a judge then that also has a chance to rule on it if you want to do it that way.
Is that needed if, is from a board's standpoint, if that wasn't listed on the web?
If the board decides that your, your violation was unwarranted, I think can take action to, you know, do their thing.
Yeah, I believe it's updated because I brought, I came in to talk to Karen that day and I was like, this isn't on the website and so I need to update it that day. It isn't on the section that said under golf cart registration. It did not say, and I think I sent you an email out to that, that it did not say passengers must be and they had to be, passengers are not to hold passengers on their lap while a vehicle is operating. I believe it said something about being preceded.
I mean, I just, for another reason, I did a search on that on the town website and it came up with what I thought was a losing ordinance. If you picked on the ordinance, I thought it was within the ordinance.
It was within the ordinance.
Yes, okay. That's fine.
It wasn't in the ordinance on that day, correct? Even?
It was in the ordinance on that day. It just, the page that you went to said golf cart registration. And it just, you know, we threw some stuff up just to make people aware that, you know, these are the changes when, that were made in 2020, I believe. But the actual ordinance is then in, under ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
So are you wanting to sort of challenge that, I guess, and challenge the?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's $150. My largest concern is the safety of our, you know, of our citizens and of our families and, and, you know, being a young family, we have a two-year-old and a four-month-old. And I know that we, that, that is most likely in place to keep 15-year-olds from riding on each other's lap back and forth through town and acting like fools. And, but in this particular situation.
They never do that.
Right, in this particular situation, it kind of, it kind of applied to us, and so I guess my, my concern is, is more of a discussion on what we can do to, you know, make those rules maybe either more specific or figure out something for, for children, to address children directly. And of course, it'd be great not to have to pay $150 to for something that is minimal as that. I, I, I can promise you that this is not gonna be something that I'm gonna take to Marshall County Court to take any of your time or any of his time or any of those.
But if you want to take it to the council's time, then we need to schedule another time for you to come back and also you know, the place and everybody kind of organized.
Which that officer will be offended if we did that, so that would be. Do you want to come back?
That's why we can, we can do that.
You'd like to schedule a time to?
Have the officer here and talk again?
It's kind of a quasi little trial.
Right, right. Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that. Let's, let's do that unless we want to.
Yeah, I might schedule it as a special meeting, a head of a meeting.
Well, I think Wayne has a question.
My suggestion is, what was happening, coming first, the dispute, I think, violation or ordinance that we put at the next meeting? And that we set it up prior to prior to council meeting, like 5:30 or something. Have the officer here at that point.
What's council's opinion?
I, I agree with that. Set it up, I just 5:30 or 5:45 and you know, before the next council meeting, 20:30.
You'd be able to have the officer here, Wayne?
Okay.
And I don't disagree with setting it up before your next meeting and so forth, but I, outside of the meetings, I don't think you can make decisions.
No, you cannot.
Right, so it's either we do a work session on it and then bring it back and enter information at the council meeting or we go to the council meeting 5:30 and make it, I think, in my direction.
Yeah, I, I think you just schedule it and, and have everybody, you know, they want to submit, set up stuff ahead of time, fine and dandy, but I think just schedule for 5:30, take the evidence and.
And then you give them, give them a report at 6:30?
No, no, you can, if you call it a special meeting, you can.
Okay.
Special meeting.
Yeah, because you can vote in a special meeting when you can't work session.
Right.
So we'd be.
And we'd have a special meeting at five thirty. Karen, could you put notice out for us? To address the ordinance violation?
Yeah, you got their name, right?
I'll make him, I'll make him.
I understand. Right. So five thirty on the twenty-third.
Yes. And I don't know if this goes into that part or not, but something to think about for the ordinance is there's no rules anywhere that I found to have seatbelts on golf carts. If you're going to make her sit by herself without a seatbelt, someone turns a corner, jumps out in front, you hit the brake, she's going forward, you take off, she's going back, she's turning, she's going off to the side. Just something to think about. Kind of, yeah. She likes to climb, so climbing over seats, thirty-six inches is one-year-old, two-year-old, so.
Lot of lot of towns in Indiana are going, have, and I I searched just about everyone I could find. Forty-eight, no children, so no children under forty-eight pounds that would require a child's safety restraint seat are permitted to ride on a motorized car. So basically, anybody in a car seat, and she's still in like a booster seat until she's forty-eight pounds, then then she can go to a golf cart. Now, they make car seats that go to, that go on golf carts and I, you know, by no means am standing up here saying, hey, let's not put, you know. People, people can do what they feels best, but I know that what we have as far as just a minimum height requirement. And is is not, she was like, like my wife said, she was thirty, was thirty-six inches before she even turned two, so one-year-olds on golf cart is. There's an exception and she may be one of ten kids that in the state that. Yeah, it was was thirty-six inches before she was two, but it it may happen, so.
So the motion for set a special meeting of May twenty-third, five thirty, and.
Made the motion.
Second. The move by Mr. Githens and second by Mr. West to have a special session at five thirty on the twenty-third of May. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Thank you. Anyone, Scott, anything more? Anyone online? Hearing none. Council issues, Mr. West. Citizen input.
You saw citizen input.
Oh, anything more on citizen input?
Alden O'Nictus, four-two-four, Forest Place. Bill Sally Rich, I respectfully disagree with the raising of more tax. Not necessarily the amount. Since I was reading this. All the items that you listed are actually the vast majority, the items that you listed. Under the. Infrastructure, Cavalier Park, Beach Lounge, Fire Truck, line levy. Fire radio here. EMS, they're all things. That the redevelopment commission has participated with. They have provided funds in support of the town. You could have gone to them. Talked to them about this. You could probably have found a way to move some budget money to cover these things. I say that. From my own experience. When we were looking at moving funds during COVID, the lead town pressure on trails. Additional funds were moved. Bill Clevenger, you and I were on CRC. You've made a recommendation to award to EMS an amount above what they're asking for with the new ambulance. There is precedent. And the ability for CRC to relieve this pressure. I agree with Bill Pam and with Bill Githens. I can afford this, but a lot of people can't. And now is not the time. CRC gets over six hundred thousand dollars a year. In revenue, funds and tax funds. They have over a million dollars in their bank account now. They fund many things. They fund. Forest ads that are placed. This year, they have funded up to twenty-five thousand dollars on a housing study. While we have housing developments and developers coming to talk to us. I believe we should raise taxes when it's necessary. I personally believe. You should look at CRC and finding a way to shift tax burden so you can meet these needs without putting this on. This may change two years from now, but it it appears to me that there are opportunities here to not hold this law.
All of us defeated.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Let me finish this. It's the only time as a citizen I can give input after you've raised my taxes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would mind saying one thing that the. With CRC, they have changed their rules statewide where they no longer. They take a dim view, I guess it's how I would put it, of now using CRC money, redevelopment tip money. To pay for fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera. That ruling came out last year.
So that is removed. From now on, there'll be no.
Right, and that's one reason that the C C C D fund. Yeah, could then be used for that. And that's my thoughts on raising that.
Allowing me to ask clarifying questions. You've gone back, you've gone to redevelopment commission, went back and looked at. Any way of not being able to transfer any funds in support of any other projects or still development or trails or still other other projects. Both the council and the art for the redevelopment commission funds that they couldn't find relief that the redevelopment commission didn't pick up more of that. You're telling me that you've done that, you looked at all that before you decided to raise to increase the taxes.
I'm not going to get into a, you know, discussion of the way you voted, the way I voted when we were on the CRC. Because. At one time, at one time, Paul. You, when it was brought for the CRC to fund the infrastructure. A portion, you know, you said, well, the town should have skin in the game and. Only voted to support fifty percent of the match, which meant that the town then had to pick up that match.
Stella, if you're saying I put the town in this position, just go ahead and say that out loud. Don't you think?
No, I'm not saying, if we're not in any position, this is a matter of, you know, it's. The tax rate for the CCD fund was at five cents. Per year and it's and each year it drops. If you don't re-up, re-approve it, then it continues to drop. When you approve it as or reestablish it at five percent, then now. They they changed the law, which are the rule. Now you can keep it at five percent and you don't ever have to reestablish it. So you don't have to reestablish it every few years. And basically, you know, we just. You're talking for, I would say. I don't know if two hundred and fifty thousand is the average home, but that's. Between that and five or six hundred thousand is probably the average home in Culver. And you're talking. An additional tax of fifteen dollars each year. And I don't. To reestablish it. Now, you know, I don't have any problem, you know, of not reestablishing it. Will survive with that, it's going to keep that thirty thousand is. You can't use it for. Building, you know, like. Remodeling one of the buildings, you won't be able to use, you know, because it's going to be thirty thousand less than what what it or twenty thousand less than what. We currently are getting. Or what we would be getting if I five percent or five cents.
Respectfully disagree, as I said at the beginning.
Well, as I say, everyone has the opinion, but I do know that the state. Doesn't want us to use. I'll look it up for, I will get it up for you and send it to you.
Yes.
Patty Spelling, five oh six East Lake Shore Drive. We're here last year a little late in budget time, so I'm here earlier than I thought. I had the seven half picture of the seven windows last year on the west side of the fire station and. I don't know where they went. They're probably here somewhere. But anyway, I did copy one. It's. It represents all seven of them. You you remember seeing them all, all of them. So I was, when I. Came last fall, it was too late and he said, please approach, you know, the fire department budget. So I am doing that. I I've sent Terry a couple of things. He didn't get back to me, which he's very busy, obviously. But I just wanted to know what my next step is. If Terry isn't interested in improving this situation. If he doesn't, when will I know if he doesn't put it, if he does or doesn't put it on the budget? And another thing is that. We have talked about replacing the glass or breaking it in like they've done in other parts of that building. But Mike had another deal that he that would be acceptable to us, a lot less expensive.
Well, instead of brick, which is a very expensive solution, something like a cedar insert that would make it look like. Or one of another term, closed shutters or something like that. What he, I mean, that building is. You look at the picture, you can see how bad it looks. We look at our windows every day and see it. Well, and it's the other side of it is it's, there's no, really no insulation in there to speak of. So doing something even with the wood insert instead of, instead of the brick would be a lot cheaper and. Improve the look of your own structure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You want me to introduce myself again?
Please.
I'll hold them there. I'm here basically because I've got a problem with a tree. And I've talked about this with Mike and and he said that the budget consistently gets cut every year. And we all know that to take a tree down or to do something with the tree, it costs more money every year. And. I've got a tree that. That's dropping, they call it lichens on my roof. My roof is only ten years old and it looks like it's thirty years old because this crap, you can't get it off of it. And then the other thing is this tree has been marked for. But eight, ten years, somewhere in that neighborhood. There was the green dot and nobody seemed to know what the green dot is. I've been told it's take the tree down, it's to trim the tree, it's to look at the tree. I don't know what it is. But the.
I don't either.
Something needs to be done with this tree because I put in this brand-new sidewalk, which you guys paid some money for. And now the roots are starting to push that sidewalk up from this tree. And I don't know what to do about it. I, you know, it's on your property, say, so. There's that and then there's deadfall hanging the next house down. If it comes off this tree. It's going to land on somebody's car or their park there because it's right at the stop sign. And so. My interest is in getting more money for the tree fund in order to fix these things because. Yeah, planting trees is nice, but you got to take care of the trees that you got.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, what's your address again?
Tom.
Three-two-one West Marmont. Mike knows it very well.
On the west.
I'm looking at looking at Mike and calling you Mike, sorry. Sorry about that, Tom. Sorry about that. My apologies. Three-twenty-one West Marmont. Yes. Thank you, sir. It's on the west side of the house. Got it.
The Marshall four-four first, this might be just a question for Heather. I will put names tonight, Amber. I might have missed a council meeting. Wasn't there something about those those rocks, those big stones that were there, you said, for seating? And there, people were saying they might be unsafe. Did that ever get addressed?
It did, yeah. We met with, I met with some council members, another department head. And the contractors and the architects, we happened to be meeting that Thursday. We met and we discussed and we decided to alleviate the danger by cutting the corners of those stone rocks, those stone dungeons, so. I think it's like a one and a quarter inch was taken off each corner of those four stone.
Yes, sir.
Dave Erzold, nineteen South Plymouth. I got a couple of quick questions about. I thought that the town acquired the lot on South Main over by the water station. Is that correct?
That's right.
Um, is there any plans on what might be down the pipe for what that might be developed into in the future? I know. I've heard of a neighborhood being built nearby possibly in the future. And I, with the redevelopment coming around, like, is there anything on the dock for that?
Bob?
Not so much yet. I'm going to be drilling a well there or a third well.
Okay.
But as far as any buildings, I don't know that the councils made any attention.
I think part of that depends on.
Depends on the well.
On where the well ends up being.
And and how much space they need around the well.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if it was just going to be a parking lot or if there's plans to make it another building there or anything. I was just curious. Or a park, yeah, that'd be pretty nice.
I think once we get the well in first, I will know where we're going to have.
My my other one was kind of on the same, on that same trail of thought. Over across. On Jefferson Street, across from the apartments, there's been that lot for sale that I guess before I ever lived here was a trailer park. And now it's 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 been going down in price since two twenty twenty when they listed it at some god-awful rate. And as their price is going down and, you know, taxes just went up a hair, is there any designs on acquiring that property for the town? Because I've always looked at that and thought it might make a nice park or, you know, build civilian buildings. It might be nice to rent out to the town and. It might make cross-traffic between the lake and downtown, which I know we've talked about, I've heard in the past about businesses. Wanting more cross-traffic and bringing more people there. Is there any designs on acquiring that?
At this point, but you have some influence on CRC, so you can be.
Exactly, he gets it. So that's all I got. It was just a couple of ideas I wanted to blow around. But that's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
Yeah, Bill, this is Don Fox, three oh one North Shore Lane. I just had a question as we head into summer season and a lot more visitors about the. Stop for pedestrian signs for the the brick crosswalks and if those are going to get put back up.
End of this month will be up.
Bob said end of this month, Don.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else online?
I'm not trying to filibuster. I got one more, though. On our street, South Plymouth, since the trail was built. We've had a bit of an issue during summer, especially around peak season, when I think the rental, the summer rentals get booked. Where like around Fourth of July, if you park on both sides, the street's impassable. And ninety-nine percent of the year, it's not a problem, but when July fourth comes around Memorial Day. There's no, there's, there's no designated one-sided parking because there didn't really used to need need to be one, but now there have been a couple of issues where. I think the people on the block understand that everyone parks on the east side, like Mr. Patera lives on the corner and. We park our vehicle on on the on the same side, but come summer, especially a lot of out-of-towners, without a designation, they don't really know. So is there a way that. We could paint the west side of the curb yellow or at least. Or or a no parking sign or something because we have had issues where. I'm trying to get home from work and I have to kind of like navigate around the blocks just to get to my driveway or the cops have to come and ask someone to move or something and a headache.
Which house do you live in?
Uh, five nineteen South Plymouth, but we're, we're one street off of Main Street and the big issue comes when, if there's any kind of blocking of Main Street, people use our street as a relief, right, the lake public access. And that's really where it comes in issue, because the boats and the trailers mixed with people parking on the side, makes there some really tight spaces, and now we have pedestrian traffic too with the trail, so now we've got bikes and dogs and cars all at the same time on that street, it can get really hectic in the summer. So, just throwing that out there.
We, we actually have the same problem on Forest Place, and so Forest Place is one parking or one side only for that area.
Yes.
I live on Winfield and we got the same problem there.
And we, we, for us, all over the streets.
Oh, sure.
Signs.
I know, but that, both of them got same with the street, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Somebody, oh, you're right, yeah.
But that's no.
I didn't know there was more to the story, but always has been, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm glad I'm not alone here, I'm glad I got some help, so, thank you.
I know, is there any ordinance about people parking their motorhomes on, on the street and blocking traffic? Karen, Karen is well aware of my situation because she deals with it too. Uh, my neighbor has the habit of bringing his big motorhome and parking it right there at the corner. And it's hard if you come up that street to look and see if there's any cars coming from the other way. And on occasion he pulls out his, his fly down just enough so that, uh, uh, you know, he can access that area a little bit better and it stays out there. And according to, he says that they aren't using it, well, why do they have it? But stuff sitting down there pumping water out and, and electric plugged into it, if they're not using it, then, you know, I, why is it sitting on the street? Okay, I just don't know, I, you know, it is a hazard for me if I come up that Marmont Street, I can't feed to the right state anything.
Steve Gorski's online, he's recently, the building commissioner.
Steve, are you online?
He's not eating, so I don't know.
All right. Onto council issues and actions, Mr. West, Mr. Githens.
Couple of things, uh, back when we were, the lady came and talked about vaping in the park, where we had some questions from the audience about, uh, what the process was or what the status was at the local library. And, uh, I went back as president of library board, went back and checked with our library director and, uh, we do have a no vaping, uh, in our ordinance or with, with the library, so we, we got it in there, because I did not know. And I said I would check and I just want everybody to know that we don't, just like we don't allow smoking in or around the building, we don't allow vaping either, so let everybody know about that. The other thing I have is if you read W T C A this morning, uh, Lizard Hospital is putting in a clinic across the street from, uh, St. Joe in Plymouth, and it will be open Monday. And initially it's gonna be, uh, Lizard Hospital out of Warsaw, they're gonna have a doctor here like three days a week for a while. And then hopefully, I'm gonna say, uh, probably over the next ninety days to six months, they're gonna have a, right now it's a traveling doctor, but they're gonna, and they're searching to have it fully staffed, so gives us another, uh, uh, medical facility that people can take aware of, so just let everybody know about that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Sally?
I don't have any seen.
Bob, I have a quick question, um, on the Surf Internet, when they, it seems that they talk about zones and, and so forth.
Phases?
Well, not phases, but geographically, where are these?
Phase four is the southern end, that's completed.
Okay.
Phase three is the next section of, like Ohio and Mill. Phase two is up and through here and phase one is up Lake Parkway, Amby Road up in that neighborhood.
Okay. Bill?
Yes.
If you go on the Surf site, click on construction, you should get page that shows you all three states. Click on Indiana, click on Marshall County, and then you have to drill down on that map and you can see exactly where, what they call them, service areas. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else, Mr. Ham.
I have nothing.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Mr. Githens moves to adjourn, Mr. West seconds, solid in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.